The contract will now be forty-four thousand. Just want to change that to approximately forty-four thousand because I don't think that's going to be exactly that. It sounds like we know the old family being or not.
So you want to change it says that this contact now this will be forty-four, but we don't know that for a fact.
Or just will be approximately forty-four.
Okay, approximately forty-four.
And then, um, on the next page under me, under town clerk, I would just remove where it says the suspicion testing training. Just end it right there where it says for testing C D L drivers, like, oh, not going to be testing C D L drivers. Just, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I think if we just leave it right after suspicion testing training here.
Yep.
Um, there's one little typo under Dorothy, Assistant Assessor. Dorothy reports working on property transfers and building permits. I think it originally made it sound like it was the same thing.
Yeah.
I don't think it was originally.
Dorothy reports working on P T T R at building permits.
Yeah, and building permits.
And.
They're two separate things. And then zoning admin, where it says Waterman, that should be Tom Otterman. I think I said Otterman in it.
Oh.
I might even said Waterman, but. But and we did tag it the first time and I thought, what the heck is that? So it's Otterman. Tom Otterman is coming to survey there. And that's all I have for that. So I'll edit them and have them here.
Mm-hmm. So that's the minutes that we added it. Can't really approve them, I guess, the one person. So we talked about the infrastructure.
Well, adjustments to agenda, I think we should add signing the tan note, the line of credit.
All right, okay. Okay, adjustment.
I mean, you already approved it last meeting, but.
Signing. What do we call that?
Tan note, T A N. Line of credit.
Yeah, line of credit, okay. Um, so we already discussed the drainage mill street project at five thirty and budget approval. We can't really do the budget approval because we don't.
You have that sheet, I don't know if you still have yours, if you took a while to just read them. I had the adjustment.
No.
The. It's from the last meeting. Got a little spreadsheet I need.
I don't know. No.
I can't get it over there.
Yep, and I, it's sitting on my computer at home, actually. Yep, that's exactly where it is, okay. Okay, so.
So it just, you know, was those changes with the, uh.
The fire department.
The ambulance.
The ambulance contract, right?
Yeah, and the audit.
And the audit, so we had real numbers, which, uh, the ambulance contract obviously was forty-four or approximately.
Drawn to a fifty-two thousand dollar increase. Twenty-four percent increase from last year.
Correct. And we were.
That's what you'll approve with the next meeting.
Okay. Which will be the first of this January, so, okay. Okay, so that's what we have for adjustments and that's all the proposed. Right, to approve tonight.
I guess if Aaron comes for the meetings or.
Right, okay. All right, um. So, and then, I guess we could talk about this. The line of credit, since we're right there, so the line of credit needs to be.
And I talked today about, I thought it was the two-two signing, she said that's fine.
Mine Zach didn't need to sign.
Right.
So it's just the two of you, it's per, um, the twenty-seven-five.
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand, yeah.
Yeah, line of credit.
Interest, five point one zero.
Yeah, usually is it.
Annually, it's just to bail us out until we get our taxes.
That's a stipulation, no, right.
Okay. Do we need a motion that we, we already talked about that, we need whatever, so we're just signing the. Signing the paperwork on that last meeting, okay, good.
It might be complicated.
Oh. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
That's done, okay, so that's done. Department updates highway, okay, good, thank you. Treasurer.
You just did, um, the tan note renewal for me, that's great.
Correct.
Um, just, I think you came in the office when I was struggling with the SAM doc, uh, renewal and validation. I'm still.
Working on it.
Still working on it, it's still a nightmare.
Okay, what can we do to, what do you need to help, to just struggle through it?
I keep calling and just saying it's really, really stressful.
Okay.
Well, didn't you say they had done an update and other things were.
Yeah, and we, I know the reason why I'm having so much trouble is because they did a computer-like update. And now it's causing us to validate our existence, which it's hard to find all the exact paperwork of what we have established.
Picture of the charter, instead of cane, now I get the cane on my wall, like you can barely read.
Yeah, I'm waiting to see these things, crazy things like that.
Okay.
So I'm still working on it and hopefully it will happen.
Okay, good.
And I, you know, renewed the Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance, the H R A, renewed all that, changed the plans.
Okay.
I've, um, completed the A C H forms for each employee because they have to sign because I'll be changing the contribution amounts.
Okay.
And how much we contribute. And just working on end of the year, trying to get all the bills paid for twenty-twenty-two and, um, then we'll start end of the year and town.
Fine, fine, yeah. Okay, good, excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Town court.
Uh, we just have the, we did the Christmas baskets, handed all those out, so.
Good, yeah, boot shelf stuff.
Boot shelf baskets and gift cards, so that went well.
Good.
It was sixteen.
More than usual, less than usual, the same, what?
Uh, maybe a couple more than last year, but roughly the same. Uh, the one other thing I think I said to you in the office was all that extra ARPA money we got.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, it was sixty-one dollars?
Sixty-eight dollars.
Six, we got a, we got extra ARPA money because a couple towns didn't take their ARPA money and so they dispersed it throughout the.
The rest of the towns.
The rest of the towns, so we got sixty-one extra dollars. Which seems like it would have been more work than it was worth to do it all at the end of the day. It's like I got a five-dollar refund check from my insurance company and I think it cost them like thirty dollars to give me that five dollars back.
I think the thing I read too was they, nothing to keep it, it had to go to town, so.
Okay.
The only way they could do it, we use the same, um, process of how much you check up out of the population, so.
Okay, good.
And that's it, really. At least have it working on end of the year and get ready for town report and.
Okay, great.
Great, then.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Assistant assessor.
The dart handed out of the changes.
Which is that, um, what is that anyways? It's, uh.
It's changes that happen after she lodges the grant list, so current use and the state is so far behind. They're finally getting stuff, I think they're working hard right down to the end of their year or the.
Okay.
The calendar year. So if you come through and they say it has to be for twenty-twenty-two, which is really crazy. So the changes had to affect twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
Grant list, so these are the.
The changes.
Right, so, you know, two, two pieces of land that should have been combined into one. Um, the second one is different buildings that were, um, not supposed to be on current use, that were on current use.
Current use, yeah, okay. Good, so we got a sign, we shut your phone off.
Thank you, I said, no.
The thing was, you wouldn't, you weren't.
Yeah, we always shut them.
It's a very loud phone, it was very, very, like, it was.
Sorry, thank you, Derek. So, um.
So I'm on you right now, I'm just touching on it, so if you.
Yeah, on the changes.
Um, so they're not really, they're not errors and omissions. It's because current usage has been short-staffed and they didn't get the changes for like six weeks. So the first property combined the two, they combined the two abiding parcels.
Parcels, yeah.
The second property, when they did a pre-appraisal, it only had three buildings that were in current use. And the reappraisal put all nine of them in current use.
Okay.
So they weren't taxed on the other six. The third one, he sold off one parcel and then there again, he had to combine, they had to combine abiding parcels.
Okay.
Um, and they, and John changed the acreage on the grade, the grade on the acreage.
Okay.
And then the fourth one, um, she just enrolled, she bought the property. She bought the property and then went into current use, so there was no change there, it just was new owner.
Okay.
So I just need that, um, to have three signatures, so we'll have to leave it for Zach to sign when he gets back. Three select ones.
Okay.
Please. And that's all I have for the report.
Excellent, thank you, Dorothy.
You're welcome.
Is Aaron going to be able to join us?
Hmm?
Is Aaron going to be able to join us?
Yeah, he's, they're just back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're coming. So can they bring me any readings?
No, well, we had some time between the first meeting and the second meeting.
And then your phone went off, that took us a while trying to get the shit off.
Yeah. And everybody was there, I don't think about it.
So, fire and fast, I can check with Tim, do you know, is there anything that you know?
I don't know anything.
Okay, Constable isn't here, so we don't have a report there, library isn't here, so do you have any updates?
So library, the night truck, post haul until now, December thirtieth.
Okay.
For the light trucks and all that.
Oh.
Right.
Where'd it go?
No, it's going to be twelve-thirty now, so.
Okay.
No sand, no sand, but it will be cement trucks in the state closet.
Okay. Well, Santa's coming back, you're going to pull him in.
Right, he's putting his vacation.
Yeah, so he's done. Okay, no zoning administrator, so no report, do we have anything?
Uh, he's still working on the two things, so. Everything up by me is fine now.
Okay.
And other stuff is, something's going to happen, I guess, but it's kind of up to the property owner, we let them to put in a figure out a survey.
Oh, they're still working on that, okay.
And a complaint came in today about somebody building onto a trailer and there's no permit, so.
Okay.
They have plans on that, trying to figure out what's going on.
Okay, good. Health officer, no one, nothing, and no health officer.
I think there might be something with that trailer as well, with the health officer.
Okay.
Can't.
We'll wait till here on that, next year.
Yeah.
Uh, maintenance?
Well, uh, no, it was just a sound in my office, but you already told me what that was, so that's wonderful.
Sure, tremendous investigation. Here, thank, okay, good, that's done, I T?
Nothing, no.
Good. Planning commission? Nothing?
I think so, they're doing that, you guys do that, have the rigations, I don't know. You know, we got that thing, it's the last guy wrote up most of it that we're supposed to, no, I mean, whole land fish and everyone's supposed to let them know what they thought of it, so.
Okay.
That's the safe route.
Okay, we're open to public and other business, do we have any other business? We have.
I just have questions, as you mentioned, with the ambulance earlier, does Rob have a representative on that committee or advisory commission that they formed in the past two months?
Not that I know of.
No, we were, someone was going to go, but it ended up being the same night as one of our meetings, so then nobody went. And I think there, if I remember correctly, the meeting quarterly.
Something like that.
I think it was September, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think that your next meeting is in January.
Yeah.
Okay.
So probably, I mean, it would make sense for Aaron to see.
Right. Correct. Absolutely.
And Derek Curtis is one of our people too, and he's a big part of that, but you know, service down there.
Right, 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 uh.
That's it.
Okay, I guess we'll just kind of wait a few minutes here for Aaron.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Could approve, if you can, I think you should approve.
Budget.
In a minute.
In a minute, yes.
I'll have to fix them, but.
Yeah.
A couple of corrections, yeah.
That'd be good.
Oh, I guess this little thing, I don't know.
The twenty-two, twenty, twenty-twenty-two annual report from the broadband. I don't even know what they're called now, what's it now?
It's just their, I just got an email today, so, um, I think it's their yearly, this is an annual report they must be sending out. We could probably put it in the town report.
Construction purchase over seven hundred miles of fiber off the table, two million hardware, equipment was ordered, transmitted necessary applications, eight electric. Communication utility companies giving us access to more than twelve thousand utility poles spread over five hundred miles, roadway. Roadways in twenty-four towns are now able to, we, we are now able to prepare these poles for installation, budget summary. I guess, they're just kind of giving us a, like, F Y I, this is what we're doing, this is what we got. This year, the Vermont grants and financing approved eight hundred thousand, pre-construction. Twenty thousand. Million. Rescue Plan Act. Okay, that looks good, yeah, we can add it to the town report. Construction serviced area, services available, four hundred and thirty-two addresses, Concord, Waterford, and Lunenburg, well, that's not Groton.
No, they're waiting on that spot, that little building.
Oh, yeah, I don't see anything about the little building in here. Don't, okay. So. We're on intermission for a few minutes here, hoping that Aaron's going to come back to the meeting and we can finish up. Because then we can finish up the budget and. The minutes, what else, is that it?
For the budget with those changes from last week and then he'd sign all the.
Sign all the stuff in those things, okay. Already signed that. So. Right. So next year, what's our, so next year, we have some ideas, the select board's going to work on too for projects. We'd like to keep working on something for the signs, for the speed signs for the town on three O two, coming in and out of town. We want to keep working on that project to see if we can get the signs put up. People have commented that that reminds them to slow down in town, which is good.
Sheriff was here today.
I saw that, again.
I know.
He's been here.
Tuesday, I know.
Yeah, I've been here quite.
Been here two days this week.
Yeah, just getting in his last year-end budgetary stops, I guess. Um, and then another discussion that we had talked about possibly is working on something about ordinances for cleaning up yards and junk. And trying to figure out if we could put together a committee or something that could oversee trying to do stuff with that. And we're going to keep working on the town. Park, maybe get some money for the fence, to put a fence up on the riverside now that we got lighting up, which people are very happy about the lighting, so that's good. So. We can hopefully get the park to be more usable and stuff.
Somebody reached out to me yesterday about wanting us to do a place for kids to go slide in. We talked about town property and then possibly like wrecking the insurance to be under rep or something. So I said, well, what town property, town-owned property, and a good slide is fine.
We don't have any.
And it really isn't.
Go up to that old dump. Slide down the hill, I don't know, yeah, we don't.
I mean, it's a nice idea, just trying to think of something to get kids out in a battle.
Right. Why kids actually go out today and do things?
That's what she's trying to push.
We don't have phone service here, so they won't be playing on their phones.
Behind the pancake house, is that that's a good hill? To the river.
Into the river?
No, no, it's a.
You can put a jump and see if we can clear the river.
Yeah. That's the other thing, it gets all private, maybe that's true.
Liability. Nobody, everything's a liability today. It's too bad. Okay, I'm giving Aaron till six-thirty. Hopefully he'll show up. Dorothy, I'll have to page him.
I sent an email, I mean, they're bad, they're bad.
Truck stuff, will they get back, go for a run or something? Oh, you know, the letter?
Oh, we can open the select board, Aaron, do you want to look at the letter?
It's not bad, it's not bad, it's not bad.
Oh, we, I, oh, this one. Okay, we'll open this one. It's a Christmas letter?
No, I'll.
Got to put the check in. Oh, check in, yeah, it says, uh, Groton Select Board, uh, to the Groton Board members on December sixth, uh, twenty-twenty-two. The Groton Fire Department elected Wade Johnson Senior, the Fire Chief for the year twenty-twenty-three. Sincerely, Debbie Johnson. So we have. We have to approve that.
Point of aftertown, maybe? Or man?
No, we approve it, man.
Yeah, I don't think it's aftertown, either.
I thought, no, not to town, I thought it was when you appoint everyone else.
Fire Department's on a different.
Right, it's, it's January.
It's on a diff, yeah, January, they're on a different year. What are you thinking, Aaron? It's coming. It's coming.
There he is.
Okay, good, now we can finish.
Now we can finish it.
It's easy, Aaron. Nothing serious?
No, there was, somebody had a really, really big bonfire.
Oh.
Behind their house.
In the house?
Behind their house, and they live on top of a hill, so everybody looking out could see the house and a big fire.
That's good.
Yeah, well, at least.
That's good.
So.
So we've been through everything, Aaron, but, um, what we need to talk about is the minutes.
Yep.
From, um, and we had to make some, um, oh, here, they're in front of you, we made some, um.
Couple of corrections.
Corrections to it, um, the, the contract for the ambulance is estimated or approximate for forty-four thousand, approximate, not definite.
Definitely, yeah.
And then the other things was, uh, just, um, the C D L, yeah, just testing, and then there was a and and whatever, and then, so.
So we'll adjust them and have them in the select board, um, hold for you guys to sign and they have to approve.
So.
Yep.
So we just need to make a motion to accept them as corrected or whatever.
All right, I'll make that motion, are we sitting there?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December seventh, twenty-twenty-two with corrections.
Second discussion.
Been done, right?
It has been done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Good, the other thing was, um.
Did you really go through the whole thing?
We're all busy, it's a lot of people. And we just talked about the updates on the, I mean, the, yeah, really, just the drainage project and the parking spots and.
A D A accessibility and stormwater and.
Eighteen extra spots and sixty by a hundred, getting pushed back out there and removing the wall and all that stuff. I think you're up to date on all that, because you and Zach worked on all that, I think.
No, Zach, but, yep.
Okay, and then, what was the other thing we needed?
Tan note.
Oh, the tan note, so that's in the folder.
Yep.
And that was just for our line of credit for two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That's the fire department.
Over there.
If you weren't assigned before, and, uh.
So, and, uh, let's see, that's the line of credit, yeah.
A few pages.
More than one spot assigned. No other major updates or?
No, um, no, we, everything was pretty.
Minor.
Minor, yeah, um, we just made a, for that note, we added to the agenda there, but. There really wasn't any updates, I guess, that we have.
Aaron, did you sign the, Aaron's in the meeting?
I did not, I was going to go through, assign everything in here afterwards, is this the one?
That's the one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so Dorothy talked about that.
I'm just going from the state to say to Tori, and then I did, no, I took two weeks late, can you?
And then we had, we got a letter from the Groton Fire Department. For Wade Johnson Senior, for Fire Chief, so I guess we would make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Fire Department to. Appoint Wade Senior as Fire Chief.
Second?
Okay, all in favor? Huh? For twenty-twenty-three, so, discussion, all good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Wade's will be chief for.
For the year, yep.
Um.
Then budget.
Then budget, that was the last thing. Then budget, that was the last thing we need to talk about, so the budget, we.
That was on Espera future.
Oh, you have the, yeah, cause I didn't bring mine, so we don't need to sign anything on this letter or anything. So, let's see, the budget, we didn't really talk about the budget, except that we just, the changes. Um, the fund balance, the increase. Um, so it was fifty-two thousand.
In the fund balance, or?
Uh, no, that was.
That was the increase of fifty-two thousand, fifty-two thousand, which is four percent.
Yep.
This year. Um.
And then I think on that, I put, you, put using fifty thousand as the fund balance, would you guys decide that next time?
Yep.
What amount?
Right.
That's how we get the amount that needs to be raised for taxes.
Taxes.
Yep.
Which is ninety-seven, three oh one. So, um, so we need a motion to.
You know where the fund balance part now is, um.
A motion to approve the budget as.
Presented?
Presented for the twenty twenty-three year. Do I make a motion or did you just make a motion?
I, I'd accept yours as a motion.
Okay, so, that's a motion, and we, we don't really have any discussion because we've already been over the budget unless you have any discussion.
I mean, the only discussion I would say is, this is the select board's budget.
Right.
But having a, uh, public town meeting this year.
Yep, we'll make.
The townspeople can.
Comment.
Comment, change the budget where they see, that's always a possibility.
That's good, yeah, that's good.
So what amount is going into the Fire Department juror?
Fifteen, I believe, right?
Is that where we ended up?
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the budget's approved by the select board for.
Presentation to the town.
Presentation for the town.
Yep.
And that was just for the.
End of the, yeah.
We got it, you can open this, we got a select board, ooh, letter.
Is that Dorothy's handwriting?
That's pretty good.
That's what we checked.
That's got the check in it?
Thank you very much, Dorothy.
Thank you.
It was a thank you letter from Dorothy for the ham from the select board. Okay.
Did you get any Christmas cards? You hang that one up at your house, or?
I got a few, I got a few, I thought I was done getting them and then I got another one, so I gotta send another one out, whatever, but. Uh.
You get them from vendors, don't you?
Yeah, we used to, I used to get like Holy Macro, but we used to also send out Holy Macro credit cards.
Credit cards.
Cards too, yeah, so, it's kind of nice now. Uh, set agenda for the select board meeting, unless you had any other business for.
Open to the public or other business? Um, I don't think so, um, I guess, I would say that, um, it's been a pretty solid year, pretty good year for the town of Groton. Don't think anything too alarming has popped up, too earth-shattering. Um, I guess I'd just say appreciate the work the town employees, um, and volunteers in the town. A lot of people volunteer for stuff that, um, isn't always recognized. Uh, appreciate everybody who tunes in to the videos too, um, I think where there's like two dozen or more of that, pretty solid every week, so I mean, that's a good thing. Kingdom Access TV showing up and making that more accessible to everybody, so. Um, happy holidays and all that stuff, right?
Absolutely, I talked about, before you got back, about some things maybe we were gonna work on next year, I still got a comment, I got a comment about still doing the the, the signs for the speed coming in and out of town there. Somebody really would like those because it reminds them, blah, 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 cleaning up, uh, maybe some ordinances for junk and stuff.
There is.
Yeah. Work on some of that stuff, maybe get a committee or something that could work on.
The junk ordinance.
Yeah. We gotta.
Yep.
Figure that all out, um, unless, do you have any other things that we?
I don't believe so, I mean, thank you to everybody for carrying on without me.
Oh yeah.
And getting stuff done.
How about set agenda for select board meeting, which will be January fourth, so I don't think we have anything crazy do we for, um.
We'll have a preliminary like fund balance that you can, you know.
Talk about. Um, no, for sure.
Has to be to the printers by January thirtieth.
So we'll discuss that, the town report?
Article, yeah, on the.
Yep.
Uh.
Um, okay. How soon do, if townspeople want something on article for town meeting day, do they have to have that submitted before the end of January?
Forty-seven days before town meeting.
Before town meeting, okay, forty-seven days before town meeting. Um, okay, yep.
I think that's it.
Thought of one more thing for maintenance.
Okay, we've already been, I'm sorry, ma'am, we've already been by that.
When, um, he can, did it clean their furnaces?
Yep.
He said that there was one fan in the can that didn't have a backup switch or something, so he, I caught, let Tim Cory know that we needed this backup switch to work correctly, so the, Tim Cory's guys came, looked at it, figured out what it was, they didn't, they had to order it. Didn't think it could be a big deal, so that didn't work.
Good, and I fixed the noise under, is it the heater? That's in the heater there? Yeah, there's a kickboard heater over there.
What was it?
It just makes, they get old and they, they rattle and whatever.
I played for it before, so I was getting worried.
Yeah.
We have them in the house and sometimes they vibrate and stuff, but I didn't know there was one down there.
I do, cause I go and turn the water off down there, I saw the email the day after and I, he said you were going down, so I thought, I bet you that was what it was, so. I didn't see any.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
So that's good. Yeah, no problem, uh, make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, adjourn and sign owners.
These are done, these are done.